We have to sit still or not have personal.
Good morning. This is a special called meeting of the Buncombe County Board of Education. I'd like to call this meeting to order and we'll have the pledge of allegiance. Today, the National Anthem is done by NCA High School Air Force JROTC, instructed by Major Kevin Dean Boer and Major Sergeant Douglas Draper. And the National Anthem is performed by members of the NCA High School Wind Ensemble, directed by Kevin Young. Please rise.
Call guard, attention. Carry colors. Forward, march. Call guard, halt. Present, colors.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Order, colors. Post. Forward, march.
I ask that you remain standing for a moment of silence. Thank you. You may be seated. At this time, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda. Thank you. Could I get a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Agenda's approved. At this time, I will recognize Dr. Baldwin for his recommendations for our return to learn plans.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have three recommendations to bring to you this morning relative to the allowances that are provided in Senate Bill two. And Senate Bill 220 was signed into law by Governor Cooper on March 11th. You may recall that we actually referenced this bill during our board meeting earlier this month. Essentially, this new law requires us to operate our schools for grades K through five under Plan A for in-person instruction. In addition, we are required to offer that Plan A instruction to all students, grades K through 13, that currently have an individualized education program, an IEP, or a 504 plan of accommodation. For all other students, grades 6 through 13, we must offer either a Plan A or Plan B model of in-person instruction. These three components are required to be in place no later than April 1st. The law also stipulates that remote-only instruction must be available for any student that desires that option. Based on the flexibility within the law, our recommendations are the following. First, beginning Monday, March 22nd, that all school buses be allowed to transport students under Plan A guidelines. Over the past several board meetings, we've talked about the logistical challenges, especially running an intermediate school transportation regarding the school buses. So this essentially would allow us, where needed, the option to permit two students per bench seat. Second recommendation is that, beginning that same Monday, March 22nd, we allow the four intermediate schools to fully operate under Plan A guidelines. Therefore, both fifth and sixth graders in their buildings will operate in Plan A. And again, we've had a number of discussions in the past about some of the dilemmas specific to the intermediate school in operating a building where two plans are in place. Half your building under a Plan A, half your building under Plan B. Third, beginning March 29th, allow all schools to fully operate under Plan A guidelines. In other words, all students in kindergarten through grade 13, and we include grade 13, if you recall, because of our early college and our five-year program there, that chose to participate within in-person instruction, they will attend school daily. Specific to the last recommendation, the advantages are the following. Creating a consistency so that all categories of students are similarly scheduled for in-person instruction, allowing for one full week of planning for middle and high schools before transitioning to Plan A, and maximizing the quantity of instructional time for in-person students as we enter into the final six weeks of the school year prior to exams. Now, before asking for any questions that you might have, I do want to address the thought behind eliminating the asynchronous Wednesday instruction. Beyond the importance of, again, maximizing the instructional time for our students as we close out the final two months of this school year, I'm going to ask Mrs. Swanger to also add some comments.
Thank you, Dr. Baldwin.
When we began planning for COVID instruction this year, if you will recall, asynchronous Wednesdays provided that additional time and especially that additional support for our most vulnerable students. As you recall, we've been bringing in students on Wednesdays throughout most of the school year when we have been remote. We are recommending that 612, if the board adopts that plan, that they also return to five days of instruction. Our K-5 students are attending school five days, and this is our first week. Consistency in both teaching and learning is key, especially as we move through the final eight weeks of the school year. Our school year has had interruptions that no one could have predicted. COVID caused those, and we have had to respond, and we've responded quickly. We do currently have teachers in all grade levels, K through 13, who are charged with teaching in-person students and remote students based on student numbers in a classroom or based on course contents. We know our teachers are working very hard to meet the needs of both groups of students simultaneously. Teachers have worked hard. They've tried to find best ways that they could engage the students remotely through Google or their classrooms, Seesaw, and then also meet the needs of those students sitting in front of them. And now that we have more students in front of them, those needs will have to be met. We know it's challenging, but our teachers have been doing it. They're doing a great job, and they're helping each other in getting better in that delivery. We've asked principals to review schedules to make sure that teachers have time. And we know that, as an educator, there's not enough time to cover and complete all of the duties that we need to do. But are we making sure that teachers have time for planning and, most importantly, time to check in with those students who are still continuing to be remote because those families continue with that option? Central office trainings and meetings, we will be very sensitive to the time and not schedule as many after-school functions. So again, teachers have that time to complete the tasks that they have to, these important last weeks of school, because we know that we have some time to make up for. We're not as ahead in the hours of instruction as we normally are. So this will give us an opportunity to provide consistency and also what is needed for our students. We're appreciative to our teachers because we know they're working very, very hard in a complicated environment that COVID has put in front of us.
You know, closing before we answer questions that you might have, just think it's important to also keep in mind that compared to this time last year, it seems like that was 10 years ago, doesn't it? We have operationalized a number of preventative measures, including the three Ws, temperature checks and increased building ventilation time. That's just to name a few. COVID vaccinations have now become a reality for many of our employees, those employees that wanted them. And likewise, as one of the pilot school districts in the state, we now have the capability in each of our schools for accessing the rapid antigen test. We think that is certainly an advantage as, again, we try to close out this school year. So with that, open it up if you have questions prior to discussion, Madam Chair.
Members of the board, do you have questions?
Dr. Baldwin, I have one. The rapid antigen testing is, we have the ability to do that daily, is that correct? It's not three days a week or two days a week or? We have the ability in each school. I understand we don't have nurses at every school, but we do have the ability in every school, every day, to do that. Am I correct in that?
That is correct, and that is, again, that is conducted by our school health nurses.
Thank you.
Other questions from the board?
I have a couple of questions. So with the recommendations, there hasn't really been a lot of discussion as to what exactly the class period will look like, especially at the high school level. And you mentioned the remote, our teachers teaching remote and in-person at the same time. So just wondered if you could maybe go over exactly what a class instruction may look like in that hour and a half timeframe for that class.
Ms. Churchill, what's happening right now and has been happening with our high school teachers because they have, many of them have been teaching fully remote and in-person students since we returned to Plan B. The first 30 minutes of that class period, the students log on from home. That is their required Zoom amount of time. And teachers are doing that initial teaching, making sure that there's clarification of where to find instruction, making sure that students understand the Google Classroom lesson for the day. And then those students who are at home, working remotely, they may continue to listen in after that 30-minute required Zoom, or they can log off and work independently, and that the teacher will be working directly for the remainder of that period with those students in front of them.
So when you say that, working directly with those students that are in front of them, does that mean that they'll be going forward with more instruction? Or is that a time for them to review with those that are in person?
It would be a combination, and would it be up to the teacher to make sure that they're covering their standards by their pacing charts that they follow and then catching up students who may be behind, just as they would in any typical class period?
So what I'm hearing is that those students that choose to stay remote are likely to miss out on further instruction because of our requirements to keep them off of Zoom after 30 to 40 minutes.
The student has the opportunity to remain on the Zoom, and many of our students stay for the entire 90 minute period. The information that the standards tell us to teach will be conveyed to that student remotely, but there is more time and more support naturally for those students who are sitting face-to-face.
So why is it, then, that we can't require our students to remain on Zoom and not just allow them to, but to require them to for that hour and a half period? I think about our, some of our students who, the whole reason we're bringing them back in is because they're not engaged at home during Plan B and remote time. So now we're saying, though, to those that have stayed remote, that, you know, they can continue as is, and they can continue to listen, but they're not required to. Meanwhile, the teachers are making decisions to continue on with further instruction.
But the teacher will also make sure that all students have access to that information. You know, our principals will be, if the board moves forward with their decision today, the principals will be having individual phone calls with parents who have chosen to be remote only, hopefully encouraging them to return. But naturally, they do have that choice to stay remote. We are certainly willing to see, once we have numbers, who's returned to the classroom, which classrooms have a chance to, or maybe we'll have to have discussions about what is that Zoom period. It may need to be expanded, but we need to have principals at the table when we have that conversation, and our teachers. We heard from parents that logging on and being on a 90-minute Zoom was difficult. We heard that from students.
And I can understand that, and that's the reason that what's been happening now during Plan B, at least my understanding, and I've sat in on some classes, they do that 30 to 40-minute instruction. And then the kids do stay on, like you said, to ask questions, to work on their work. And then those in-person are also there, working on their work, getting it done ahead of time and asking the teachers for clarifications. But that, because of the equity issue, that they are not moving on. But what I'm hearing you say is that they are.
We expect them to move on, absolutely. They have to have the core standards just like those in front of them. Will they get the same? Not necessarily, because they're not sitting in front of that classroom. It puts, it does put an extra burden on the teacher to check in with that student who is remote at an additional time, or perhaps, I need you to stay on after I get this group started, and then I'm going to put you in a breakout group. So many of our teachers have really expanded that time, and that's something that we'll have to look at as we move into these nine weeks. But we need to hear from our principals and teachers once the board moves in a different direction than we've been in Plan B.
It concerns me that we're discussing the difference in those that are remote and those that are in-person. We haven't really come up with the decision yet as to what that's going to look like. But what I'm hearing loud and clear is that if parents choose to keep their students in remote, that they will not be getting the same level of education as those that are receiving it in person. And a lot of parents have chose to do this remote only because of health reasons. So to me, it just seems like a big issue that we should have addressed.
I don't think that we're getting, the service looks different. The content is the same. I think our teachers have gone above and beyond to post resources, videos, opportunities for tutoring to engage those students who are remote, because it should not be an equity issue. However, if you need individual assistance, if I need to work with you and one other student in my class and you're in front of me, I have to do that. I might can have the computer screen sitting with me with a student who is remote at the same time for that small group instruction. Teachers have worked really hard to meet all these needs, but we have to know that our teachers can only do so much. They will make sure that the same content, the same standards, that every single student needs to receive. Can they, can they engage the student for 90 minutes in that home environment? They're certainly trying, and there's an invitation to, but is it realistic? Because some students just cannot attend, or they don't have the bandwidth for a 90-minute session, and then through four periods of a school day. So we really don't want it to be an equity issue. It should be the same content provided. It will look different in the delivery.
Other questions from board members?
I have a question.
Yes.
So I just want to go back to something that you said. You said principals are going to be reaching out to families that chose remote only from the beginning. So am I understanding that right? That any student up to this point that has chosen remote only is going to be given the opportunity to come back full-time face-to-face?
Our principals will be reaching out to those families, beginning with our EC students and our 504 students because the law mandates that they are invited back. So we'll ask those students to come back, and then looking at numbers, making sure that we've got the right schedules in place, that we have spacing that we can all come to terms with, and then asking any other student if they're ready to come back as well.
And remember, this is all about numbers. So in certain situations, it could be that if those parents that initially chose all remote decide to choose in-person, there is some risk that it may look different in terms of the teacher and the assignment of the class. Again, it's all about the numbers, because each school has a different percentage of those students and those parents that chose all remote. So again, we will try to do that balancing act to the best of our ability, to be welcome, to try to accommodate. But it could, in those situations, cause some changes in terms of the placement of the classroom and the teacher.
But could it be a no?
Pardon me?
Could the answer be no? That's what I want a definitive answer on. Is there a chance we're going to tell a family that wants to come back full-time, no?
There is that chance, depending on the particular class and the grade level. I think those will be minimum, but I'm not going to stand here and say that there won't be situations in 42 schools where we could have that situation. I think our principals are open to anyone asking, at this point in time, to change. Again, our intent is to try to finish the last two months of this school year as strong as possible. And again, we're going to do our very best. We've said this before. I don't think we've, from the start, we've never tried to equate, for the majority of our students, the quality of what's provided remotely to what's provided in-person with a teacher in the classroom.
So I have another question. If we are talking about teachers, and I agree with you, they've been working extremely hard. And I know a lot of them, I'd probably say the majority of them are working well beyond their hours in the building. A lot of them are probably working weekends and afternoons to try to provide this additional materials that are needed for those that are in remote, because they've been doing that for the Plan B students as it is. So to me, in order for us to work towards a more equitable opportunity for learning, that we would allow the Wednesdays to remain asynchronous, at least at an early-release level, because that will allow them more time to meet individually with the students if needed, our vulnerable populations if needed, and take the opportunity to meet within their groups. I think they're called PLCs, and you know, we have instructional coaches here in Buncombe County schools. So that gives the opportunity for them to meet as a group, for instance, math, with the math coach to help them provide that additional instruction that's needed for those that do choose remote. And we're talking about 30% of our kids. So I mean, it's a pretty good-sized population that we're talking about here. So that's why I would advocate for, at the very least, doing an early release on Wednesdays to allow that opportunity, because that would still give you your 504, the IEP students, their fifth day. But it also allows the opportunity to, like I said, work towards providing the best education for all of our students. And then, not to mention, you know, I say it a lot, but it gives us a chance to enhance our cleaning protocols also, just even that, you know, hour and a half or whatever timeframe, more so than if we're going full speed five days a week.
Certainly respect that. Again, we looked at this as balanced as possible. Consistency was very important for us with the recommendation that we brought to the board. But again, certainly respect that and understand that.
So could we be consistent with offering K-13 early-release Wednesdays? Because like you were saying, and I didn't even realize that. I thought that we had had enough at our elementary levels that, you know, we had remote-only teachers and in-person teachers. So I didn't even know that this was an issue going all the way down to the elementary level. But is that something that we can look at considering? I'd like to, you know, talk about that option a little bit more. I think that's a win-win for everyone.
Well, again, we brought recommendations to the board. There's discussion with the board. There are multiple options out there. We presented the recommendations that we felt, again, served the majority of our students in this system for the best. But again, that's an option, certainly that could be discussed.
Well, I guess just from a state level, then, if we were to do something like that, would that satisfy the requirements for 504 and IEP?
Yes, it would.
Madam Chair, before we consider doing an early release on Wednesday, I would like to, if I could, go ahead and make the motion that we approve the recommendations as listed. And then if that doesn't pass, we could consider the early release.
I would accept that motion.
I would all for a second, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Is it time for discussion now?
Madam Chair, if I could follow up with a question to Dr. Baldwin and to Mrs. Swanger. So, Dr. Baldwin, just to be clear, you're not you're not going to operate any differently if we adopt these recommendations than you would have pre-COVID. And I say that to mean, if, as we go through the next six weeks after spring break, a week before, if things happen and principals come to you and say, hey, we need to X, whatever that is, we need to extend the time at the high school level from 30 minutes to 60 minutes where we have the Zoom students. Or we need to create a situation that, whatever it is. And I'm not in the building every day, so offering examples, I'm obviously not doing a very good job of that. But you're not going to change how you operate this school system simply because of these recommendations. Things that happen beforehand, and especially during COVID, none of this is fair to anybody, and it's difficult. But you're going to continue to make the best decisions possible for our kids and for the most kids as we move forward. Am I correct in stating that?
I'd say you're very correct. Our protocol will not change one little bit. We will still have the same mandates, still have the same demands. Essentially, we'll be operating that school building as we have.
And that'll be everything, that'll be everything from how lunches are done to buses. You may run into some problems that we hadn't even thought about yet on buses, athletics, music, bands, all of these different things. We are going to come up. And that, to me, has been the strength of the school system for many, many years, is that our system has done a very good job of adapting to and doing the things that work out and do the most good for the most kids. And I just, I want to make sure that we're clear with that, and that's where you're headed. I don't doubt that that's where you're headed, but I want to give you the opportunity to respond to that.
Well, and I might add, the board, early when we faced COVID, actually about this time last year, this board gave the superintendent and district leadership that opportunity to essentially adjust on the fly. Because, again, say this for probably the thousandth time, the one constant in COVID is change. And so we must be willing to respond to it. This is a large system. This is the 13th-largest system in the state. So what could occur in the Robertson District may be very different than what we see in the North Buncombe District. What we see in an elementary school may be quite different than what we face in a high school. And again, I'll throw in the issue of our buildings, our classrooms. They are very different. We've got a building that's over 90 years old. Actually, have two buildings over 90 years old. We have a couple that are under 10 years old and all in between. So it looks different. So I think to have, and I appreciate that trust that the board has given us, because I think it's essential to operate this school system under these times.
And one last small question on buses. You mentioned, I think, as part of the recommendation, two-to-a-bench seat, obviously, they would not be sitting beside each other. The middle gap would be there. Where needed, it would be your intent with transportation to emphasize to those buses where that's not needed, that that doesn't occur. Is that correct?
Absolutely.
So that if we've got a bus that only has 15 people on it, we don't use seven seats with two to a seat, we use one to a seat. That would be the intent, correct?
Correct. And we've given our principals the option to look. When we began this school year, if you recall, we had our safety assistants on those buses. They had the function of the temperature check. But now, the function of monitoring in those situations where our buses are, certain buses are more crowded than others, there's that option as well to increase that additional staff person on the bus.
Thank you.
Dr. Baldwin, I have another question, if we can. So since we're discussing about this recommendation, I know you and I have talked. And just to be clear, I know that we've discussed six feet as not being an option. But the option to maintain even what might be coming down the CDC's recommendations here in the future for three feet. You mentioned, you know, we do have a lot of different school buildings. So it's hard to say with certainty that, you know, we would be able to provide that distance or, you know, even maybe what percentage that is. But without holding you to exact numbers, can you still? I mean, I'm just thinking like Kuntz intermediate being small-size classrooms. My daughter was in those classrooms. I know with certainty that you're not going to get the three-foot spacing. So across the county, what are we talking percentage-wise? I mean, are there, you know, out of all of our schools, would you say 50% of them will not be able to provide that distance? And again, going back to, I understand in Plan A that spacing is not a requirement. But we cannot ignore the fact that it's still, you know, recommended.
Yeah, that's just so difficult to answer. You know, again, it's a mixed bag. You referenced Kuntz and those intermediates. The classroom spacing prior to COVID was tight. We have other buildings, high school classrooms, TC Robertson across the street, much larger classrooms. It's very different across the county. That three-to-six-foot spacing, if I was forced to guess, I would say that, you know, over 50% of our classrooms will be able to accommodate that. And that is simply an estimate.
Okay, that's all I was looking for.
An estimate. But we do have, you're bringing up a point that we all have to understand that the six-foot spacing, even though the CDC, the latest research that has come out, points toward the three-foot spacing equitable to the six-feet of spacing. That's the newest research. That's at the CDC level. That is not at the level of where we operate in North Carolina, because we operate off the toolkit. So we just had this discussion with local public health yesterday. We all have to understand that in terms of a situation of COVID in a classroom, it falls back to six-feet spacing. If it's five-feet spacing, it's still six-feet that the reaction and the responses are going to be from the Health Department, not us, because they're in charge of the response to a situation of COVID. So we've got to understand that. That's part of what we have to live with. The other thing that you've heard, time and time again, this board has heard from our Health and Human Services Director, Stacey Saunders, is where you have a lapse in one of the three Ws, it means that you then need for the other two to put greater emphasis. And that's indeed what I think we've tried to do already in a number of situations. But that's very important. It's very important for the public to understand that, too.
Well, and I think to tag on to that, you know, not just making sure that we're practicing those other two in the schools, but outside of the schools. So we can't forget that, that we can't practice safety protocols that are keeping our percents down in the school buildings, and then leave the school buildings and disregard those same protocols. Because it will eventually come back into our classroom, and we will start to see those positive cases. And like you said, you know, it'll be up to the Health Department to make that decision. And rightfully so, because, you know, when we're talking about the spacing, it's for good reason. You know, we're talking about this virus is a droplet virus. And so when people cough, sneeze, even talk, sing, you know, the risk is there. And even people, especially the older age group, they can be asymptomatic and still spread the virus. So I think we just have to be absolutely sure, as a community, that we are doing everything possible inside our buildings and outside of our buildings to provide the most, you know, safe environment we can for our kids and our staff, you know, everybody that's involved in all of this. I know, you know, parents are tired of me talking about space, but that's the reason. It's not that we want to make people's lives difficult. But, you know, there's science behind that. And I think we just need to make sure that, you know, that's recognized.
Well, I appreciate that. And I think we've heard, again, multiple times, that the cases of COVID are those that initiate outside of the school building but come into the school building. And along with that spoiler alert, because I promise you, at our next board meeting, which will be two days prior to spring break, you're going to hear me say loud and clear, we all have to be cautious because of the spring break week, so that we do not have a spike that then forces us to readjust, again, as we're in the home stretch of this school year.
All right, other questions from other board members?
Dr. Baldwin, if you would, sir, just confirm for me again. During the course of making this recommendation, you met with all of the intermediate school, middle school, and high school principals and discussed this at length. And am I correct in the understanding that a large majority, if not all, endorsed this as well?
Clearly, the majority of our principals. And we did have intermediate, middle, and high school principals in this same room last week as we discussed this. We discussed a number of particular options and concerns and issues. But you are correct.
Okay. And in terms of flexibility, I assume that that was discussed during the meetings as well, that there are unforeseen, just like you pointed out from the very get-go when we started dealing with COVID and making changes, that we don't have a crystal ball, and things have to be dealt with as they come up. And I assume that that has been stressed to the principals as well, that if those issues arise, that it will be taken on a case-by-case basis, correct?
That's exactly right. And on multiple occasions, they have been given one telephone number. And that's my phone number. And they're told to call directly on any issue. And you've heard me say this, we are incredibly blessed, not only with all of our staff, our teachers in the classroom, we're blessed with tremendous leadership from the principal's desk. And so, you know, when they take on a responsibility, it is very dedicated service and attention that's going to be provided to their school building and their staff and their students.
Yes, we have a great group of professional people in those roles, as well as in the roles of administrative office as well. So thank you.
Mr. Queen, if I can add, we, this is different from when we went remote last year. We're so much more equipped. Even, we're excited to have all of our students back, if that's the direction that you move today. We think about if we have to go back remote or a classroom has to go back to a remote learning, we're so much better equipped than we were this time last year. So if a classroom has to quarantine, kids are taking devices home every day. Whether we're, we're moving away from such a device instructional mode to doing, again, that on-person, in-person, face-to-face support. But we do expect our students to carry their devices back and forth, our teachers to carry devices back and forth, so that in the event of that, we can keep on going, provided the teacher is healthy and can deliver instruction.
Okay, I'm going to call for the vote. I have a motion, a second, and we've had discussion. So all those in favor of the motion to accept the superintendent's recommendation, please let it be number saying aye.
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 Any opposed?
Nay.
All right. Motion carries. At this time, I'd like to take a point of personal privilege. This week marks a poignant milestone for school systems across North Carolina. One year ago, our school buildings closed in response to the COVID-19 pandemic. Within days of the announcement, our school nutrition department was preparing food for students, and our teachers began 100% online instruction. Every BCS staff member absolutely embodied the phrase, improvise, adapt, and overcome. As a school board, we recognize how difficult this past year has been for our families, our staff, and our community. We acknowledge this milestone and the steps we've taken thus far to return to a normal school environment. I want to thank the Buncombe County staff members who have gone to great lengths to make sure our students can continue to grow and advance in this uncertain time. We echo state education leaders in saying our staff's resilience and resourcefulness has been tremendous. Now we look to our educators, our families, and our community stakeholders to continue to focus on our students recognizing success and also working to revise any learning loss due to the pandemic. We appreciate you all. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Don't move, Madam Chair.
Thank you, second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you.